Good evening. Thank you for coming to this evening's Lee County Commissioners Board of Commissioners meeting. We will get started here shortly. Just a reminder, please to turn off your cellphones or if I do what I did with my college students, I would just say, "We'll wait." And we'll let you finish your phone conversation. That said, please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your head. Eternal Father, we invite your presence upon our gathering today. May we find during our time together a common good, a greater purpose, and many productive means to bring glory to you. Please give us all wisdom to cover amid conflicting issues of our time. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. In your name we pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additional items for the agenda?
Not an additional item, but I move that we move item VC of new business, 5C of new business, the request for funding from the American Rescue Plan to the consent agenda.
Moving 5C from the new business to consent agenda. Any other additional items? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We do have two public comments this evening. Just a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. Please make sure you identify your name, address, and you're more than welcome to take off your mask when you come to the microphone.
Can we get a separate motion on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry. Public comments now. First individual is Tamara Brogan.
Good evening. All right. I'm grateful to be here this evening, Tamara Brogan, 404 Petty Road, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. I'm the current chair of S3 Housing Connect, and that's why I'm here this evening. S3 Housing Connect is a community task force that was established back in 2017 between agencies and the city of Sanford with the goal to make homelessness in Lee County and Sanford a rare, brief, and nonrecurring experience. As Executive Director of Family Promise, I was invited to join the task force when it first started back then. I wanted to be a part of S3 Housing Connect because I saw through helping families that are experiencing homelessness at Family Promise that a joint effort with community agencies and government would make all our individual efforts more effective and efficient. It was very exciting and hopeful when S3 started, and we started working together back then. Family Promise involvement in S3 has benefited Family Promise by providing collaboration and strengthening relationships between us as an organization and the other agencies in the task force, providing information of services and resources, and providing training for our organization. The unique collaboration of S3 Housing Connect in our community has strengthened relationships between all members of S3 and has helped Family Promise and other agencies in the task force better be able to serve the population in Lee County that's currently experiencing homelessness. S3 has also helped members with free training for their organizations and provide information and resources that the agencies can use to better perform their missions and the mission of S3 Housing Connect, which are very similar. I'm also here today because there's an item, a presentation on the agenda about S3 Housing Connect, and I'm thankful that it's on the agenda tonight, and thank you for looking into it and discussing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie Bishaw, 403 West Bake Peace Street, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. I am the Executive Director of Brick Capital Community Development Corporation. Our mission is primarily focused on housing and housing-related services. We provide housing development and especially making housing affordable for families, which is why I'm here tonight. Part of my reason is I want to advocate for the utilization of American Rescue Plan funds specifically for housing-related activities. I know that the Commissioners is still waiting on guidance around what the funding can be utilized for, but I want to make a strong case that housing-related activities is something that is desperately needed right now. All you have to do is pick up the paper or look at all of the homes that are for sale right now. You realize that many families are being priced out of the market. Brick Capital's mission, again, is to make housing affordable for everyone, and so we are desperately needing funds, not only us but other organizations that are a part of the S3 group. I know a letter's been presenting to the Board of Commissioners from S3 talking about various housing-related projects that funding could be utilized for, and so I strongly advocate to the Board of Commissioners for funding for housing-related projects. And speaking of S3, I want to speak on their behalf and echo what Ms. Brogan said here, that without S3, we would not have the collaboration and cooperation that exists today. The Board may or may not be aware, but you have a very strong nonprofit presence and community here in Sanford. Speaking for someone who came from Raleigh, there was not the same spirit of cooperation that existed there amongst nonprofits to advocate for the community, and so a large part of the reason why you have a strong presence of nonprofits and strong advocacy and strong cooperation is because of the efforts of S3, and so I appreciate that committee and I appreciate what that committee has done for Sanford. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have no old business on the agenda, so we'll move right into new business, and we have the fiscal year 2021, 2022 recommended budget presentation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to present the 2021-2022 budget. The manager's recommended budget as presented addresses the Commissioners' number-one goal of lowering the property tax rate. The budget as presented lowers the tax rate from 75 point... 77.5 cents to 76 cents. Industrial tax base and sales tax growth has allowed this change to occur. The budget also funds the second year of the county's new pay plan, which is designed to reduce turnover in our staff and retain our highly qualified employees. As you will see in the budget document, increases in staff pay and benefits were a major driver of expense increases. In preparing this year's fiscal year budget, the budget assumes that all of our departments will be back to normal operations at some point in the coming fiscal year. Estimates for fee revenues and the corresponding expenditures are returning to pre-COVID levels in the budget. We will be monitoring programs closely in case there are changes to participation levels and thus revenues. Outside of restarting nonmandated programs, employee and expenses, and capital are the major source of pay... are the major source of pay increases in the recommended budget. Moving to the PowerPoint. The budget goals that came out of our meeting back in January were, number one, lowering the property tax rate, follow-through on the commitment to employees with the pay raises, address impacts from COVID-19, and address capital project funding and debt service. The budget overview, the total requested was $86,807,44. The cut... we had to cut $2.8 million out of the request to maintain or actually lower the tax rate, and to fund all requests would have required a 4.56 property tax rate increase. So focusing on our tax base growth, which was unprecedented in a non-revaluation year, our new estimated tax base is $6,351,816,300. That equates to a growth rate from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022 of 7.3%. As the chart shows, over the last five years, the average growth rate was 3.1%. So in this year, our tax base growth doubled, and that was mainly due to growth in the Lee County industrial park. The total recommended budget is $84,394,800. This current year's budget is $79,897,969. So there's an increase of $4,105,979, or an increase in the budget of 5.14%. In the general fund summary, you see the tax base going from $5.9 million or billion to $6.3 billion, tax rate from .775 to .760. Tax revenue generated from the property tax in the current fiscal year is $45,489,000, and in the coming year will be $47,700,000. One penny now generates $614,000. Our sales tax revenues are going from a budget of $14.2 million to $18.9 million. Now, I have to stop there and talk a little bit about sales tax. That's a huge increase, but you have to remember, in the current fiscal year budget, we dropped sales tax revenues 5%, and we actually have a much larger increase than that. So the budget forecast for next year takes the increase from this year and adds 5% to that. That's how we get to $18.9 million, and we are tracking... still tracking well in this year's sales tax. So the total budget goes from $79.9 million to $84 million. Discussed a little bit about the changes in revenues, $2,174,553 in Advalorm taxes, $4.7 million in local option sales tax. You'll see in the budget document, there's a decrease in transfers in. We used quite a bit of other pots of money last year to balance the budget because of our forecasted drop in revenue, and we didn't need that money. So it makes a big... looks like a big change in the transfers, but really it's made up with the local option sales tax. And then we've increased fund balance appropriated by $500,000, really because there's that much more in capital projects in the budget. Expense changes of interest, as you go through the budget, you'll see general government's up 1.6 million. IT is the main culprit, and I'm sure we'll have a good discussion with our IT director when we get to his budget, but the big increase there is replacing our servers, no longer being supported by our vendor, so we have to go to a new server. $845,396 in public safety. When we do a COLA and a pay plan increase in the Sheriff's Department, that covers five different divisions, and it's a lot of money to give those pay raises in that department. $355,316 in economic and physical... physical development, most of that is incentives. $698,649 in health and welfare. There's a $378,246 increase to Lee County Schools and a $665,602 increase in reserves or capital reserves. That's the one penny that Davenport had discussed that we went ahead and funded in this budget with the growth. So the significant items in the budget, 1.5% COLA, funding of the pay plan. There's also additional maintenance worker, housekeeping assistant, electrical maintenance mechanic, public safety lab tech, practical nurse in the Health Department, social work program manager, and DSS and a library assistant one. We're also taking a part-time veterans officer and making that person full-time. We have a lot of activity in our little veterans office, and they do a great job of helping our veterans get the benefits that they deserve. so the last part of my presentation is really to talk about what's next in the budget process. So we have a very robust budget workshop schedule, and then we need to get clear guidance from the Board on what agencies we need to schedule to appear before the Board at the workshops. I assume that you're going to want all the departments, since this is a line-item review, and in past line-item reviews, we've had the department heads actually lead the presentations on their departments and go through it line-by-line item. But the big thing is getting invites out to Board of Education, CCCC Board of Trustees, Saga, and all the nonprofits that have asked for. So if you want us to schedule those people to come, we need to get working on that now. Any comments on who you'd like to see? Who you don't want to see, I guess, is really the... I'm going to assume you want to see everybody and do things appropriately.
What would be the process for the nonprofits? Will they do like we've done in the past?
Yes, sir. We give them, you know, 10, 15 minutes to make their pitch and talk about why they need the funding, and then, you know, the Board has a discussion, so that's what we've done in the past. But we're up to... I think we're up to 12 nonprofit requests this year.
But that's after they submit their program information and...
It's all in the big book right here. Yes, sir. So yes, we have all that information now. All right, so I'm assuming that everybody that submitted a request, we're going to find a time for them to be before the Board. The upcoming budget process, the public hearing is scheduled for Monday, June 7th at 6:00 PM. After the public hearing, the Commissioners can adopt the budget at any time before June 30th at 5:00 PM. So the last scheduled Commissioners' meeting is Monday, June 21st. Any questions?
Dr. Compton, would it be...
Yes, sir.
Would it be feasible to schedule the Board of Education and CCCC on one date and then Sanford Area Growth Alliance and nonprofits on another date?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that then? Board of Education's going to have their budget to us on May 15th. Can we work on May 21st for the Board of Education?
Yes, sir. We can put CCCC and the Board of Education on the 21st. Also, after talking with the sheriff, he wanted to be on that day as well, so that would give you three pretty robust budgets to discuss from, you know, 9:00 AM to 12:00 on that day.
Okay, so that's a full day?
That would be half a full... but that'd be three...
Half of...
Half a day, and that would be full for those three on added...
Those three would be full.
Yeah, there won't be a lot of breaks from 9:00 to 12:00 for those three.
And that's on Friday, May 21st?
We will extend the invitation.
Okay. And then Sega and the nonprofits on the 24th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM?
Yes, sir. We can do that.
And at your leisure, place all the others within those other timeframes that we have, please.
Yes, sir. On the first Friday, we probably get things started off with administration and all the corresponding departments with that. That's kind of... that way you get to go through your budget first. So I always think that's appropriate, that y'all should go through your department's budget first.
Okay. Not a problem. Any other questions from the Board? Trust everybody got the reduced version, and tonight we have the truckload version. So...
Before we move on to the CIP, I did want to talk a little bit about the solid waste fund budget.
Yes, sir.
If you remember, back at the budget kickoff meeting in January, and you do have an extra handout that should be in your notes or your little file thing, a presentation was made by Joe Cherry that showed the challenges that the county would be facing in our solid waste services. In reviewing the current financial position of the solid waste fund and the budget request from General Services, I'm concerned about the financial standing of this fund. Expenses with solid waste disposal, transportation from the man-convenience centers, and the last two years of increases in processing fees for recycling materials have begun to deplete our fund balance. For those Commissioners that haven't heard my spiel on the importance of solid waste fund balances, our fund balance is in place for the solid waste fund to cover post-closure requirements of our landfill in Lemon Springs. So when we closed the landfill, we had to have a certain amount of fund balance in place to make sure that we could cover all future landfill costs. So there's monitoring going... water monitoring going out there with wells, and we also have to typically address any erosion issues that come off the hills. So we pay a consultant to come and inspect our landfill during the year and tell us what we need to do. So blowing through a lot of fund balance, next year, if we do nothing, the proposed deficit would be almost $300,000 is something that we really cannot allow to happen. The solid waste director and General Services has recommended that we consider an increase in the solid waste fee to $131 per year and implement the sticker program. The Board may not choose to go all the way with the up to $131 if we implement the sticker program. So one of the departments we'll definitely be talking to in a budget workshop will be this department in going over the options that I've presented you tonight. So in my letter, I pretty much only go over options one, two, and three. I'm not so sure option four is really a realistic thing to do. We've talked a lot about litter control. We have four employees that are assigned to our parks for litter control. We have four employees assigned to roadside litter control, and then we're doing inter-office and school recycling. I don't know that that would be real popular if we ended that, and then if we ended recycling altogether at the man-convenience centers, even though that would save us $70,000 per year, I'm not sure that that would be very popular with the public. So I did not include that in my recommendations. So we'll have... get to have future discussions on that one.
Thank you for the breakdown. Any questions on the solid waste options that are presented for further discussion, no doubt?
Yes, the Board has a lot to talk about going forward. All right, we'll move on to the capital improvements plan and thank Santiago and Lisa for helping put this PowerPoint together. Except for the recommendations I made for where to put the projects, they did most of the work in this, so I'm just presenting and thank them for doing it for me. So here's our agenda. We'll just do the CIP review, go over the total capital requested, the recommended capital by departments, and then the next steps in the process. As a reminder, the county's capital improvement plan is intended to be our strategic plan for major capital projects, meaning any projects that exceed $500,000, and we try to put those high priority projects into the five-year funding period. So here with the total request, with total requests, we're $150,177,619. Last year's... oh, excuse me, this year's CIP totaled $171,045. So there were some decreases from last year to this year. As you can see from the pie chart, community development, libraries, and parks and recreation have become a larger piece of our capital requests, and education still makes up about 41% of the requests. In the five years, my recommendation is the total request be $119,820 with community development and what the Board approved, I think it was two years ago now, trying to put our projects ahead of education in the immediate term makes community development on this pie chart the largest section. So education's still a big piece of it. Just a bar graph to show you the difference in requested and recommended. Going on to administration, projects are recommended to begin in the fiscal year '25, '26. Key... the main project for administration is upgrade the fueling system to accommodate future fuel needs and add a training room for onsite training staff. So this will probably end up being a capital reserve fund balance expenditure. General Services continues to want it sooner rather than later, but I keep pushing it out each year. Here's a nice little picture of what they want to... how they want to expand onsite. Lee County Schools, the summary for their request, East and Lee... East and Wesley Middle School repairs and renovations, trying to figure out a way to get moving on those before we have to build a new school. Also, the Wesley and East Lee Middle School new gym and renovations, Southern Lee High School auditorium, and the Lee County High School auditorium HVAC, HVAC, and a new elementary school. I did forget to bring up in my budget document that we did search the ADM number for the schools, and it was down to 9,300. And just, I don't know, five or six years ago, our ADM was over 10,000, looks 10,100 and some change. So ADM dropped again, and it dropped significantly this year. So it's going to be interesting to see, you know, school population, whether... when the COVID ends and the kids come back to school in full force, whether the... whether there'll be more students and the ADM goes back up, because that will dictate when the next school will be. So it's... it's right now, I think it's hard to predict because of, you know, our population's going up according to the census, but yet ADM's going down. Interesting issue. So this is just kind of the summary of their projects. Lee County High School roof replacement, probably can do that with current funds such as lottery proceeds. The high school generator upgrade, we're reviewing possible EMS... EM grants for that. Then the Wesley Middle School new gym and renovations, seeking 4.5 million there, and at East Lee, they're seeking 3.5 million. The Southern Lee's high school auditorium is estimated at 4 million. And Lee County High School's Southern Lee auditorium HVAC and interior, I might have said the wrong one there. Lee County High Schools... said the wrong one there. Lee County High School's Auditorium HVAC, 3,500, oh, 3.5 million. And then the elementary school at 26 million, which is probably a pretty good number for today's spending. CCCC, as the board knows, we're moving forward on the library and classroom building, but beginning to address the Magnani Morelli purchase. So we're starting that very quickly. Community development, Lee County Library, OT Sloan Park and Recreation Center, Horton Park, Kiwanis Children's Park, Temple Park, and the multi-sports complex. So there's part-of-grants, capital reserve, fund balance, and debt to try to cover all of that. Library expansion, which we've talked about quite a bit, OT Sloan Park and Recreation Center. We'll be talking about that in future years, OT Sloan Park Recreation Center. Whoops, gotta keep up to date here. There's Horton Park. We have funding in that for next year. Kiwanis Children's Park Phase II, Temple Park Phase II, and then the multi-sports complex. Lastly, the Human Services. The Human Services is asking for $525,000 to expand the animal shelter. So the next steps are, the public hearing for the CIP is on the same date as the budget public hearing, June 7. We do not have a CIP work session scheduled, but could fit it in at one of our budget workshops, and adoption is scheduled for June 21. Any questions?
I've got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
When do you foresee the animal shelter expansion?
I think we need to have a discussion with Heath and his board members and Dr. Connect and find out, you know, if, you know, we, you know, when it's needed, because we have a relatively low euthanasia rate. If euthanasia rate was high, I would tell you, I believe we would need to move on that pretty quickly and could probably do it, pay cash for it. But, you know, I'm, I'm one of the folks that believes if you expand a shelter, you know, if you build it, they will come, and we will end up with more animals in the shelter. But we have, we have one of the lowest euthanasia rates. Heath and his folks have done a great job at the animal shelter. So that's another one of those I'm guessing at right now.
Thank you. Any other questions of the manager regarding the CIP?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. My screen time's out. Next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding S3 Connect, Commissioner Carver.
Mr. Chairman, before I start, I just want to thank Mr. Bradshaw and Ms. Rogan. Appreciate your comments today. I decided to ask you to sit through just a few comments on, on S3. I guess maybe because my imagination was kind of captured by these people who are working so hard in our community. And I've had a number of conversations with my fellow commissioners, and judging by your input, I think I learned a lot. But I also am kind of encouraging you to consider a paradigm shift, maybe, in terms of the way the county might be encouraged to support S3. Really, the purpose of my talk here, first of all, is to recognize and encourage the people that have been involved in S3, and I hope they, they hear clearly that they make a huge difference in our county. And the second item is really, like I said, for information. I'd, I'd like you to walk away from maybe listening to me today with a real understanding of the impact on the county that S3 makes, how S3 helps leverage nonprofit resources, and how entities addressing affordable housing and homelessness improve the productivity of a struggling portion of our community. One thing I walked away with from studying this whole issue is that I think there's a misconception that there's an effort made on the part of S3 and people like them to simply make it easy on people to stay in a homeless status. And I don't think that could be further from the truth. They have a compassion to move people from where they are to, to a place of wholeness. There really are some complex challenges in the forms of homelessness. Quickly mentioning them, a chronic homeless is probably the ones that you think of when you think of San Francisco. People that have been more than a year, often there are people, however, that have mental disabilities, and that's why they're still there, rather than motivated to, to change their, their lifestyle. Episodic is three episodes in a year, people that have disabilities, substance abuse issues, where they try to make an improvement, and then they slip back into some, some reason of being homeless or not being able to find housing. Often, these people are younger than the ones that are in the chronic category. Transitional, and these are the ones that I think we need to focus on as much as anything. This is most common. It's generally, they enter a shelter or temporary housing for only one brief stay. And it's usually caused by some catastrophic event, a loss of, of income, a change in the landlord's position with respect to them being able to stay there because the landlord wants to sell the house, whatever. And they're the people that have proved in the past that they have certain capabilities that if refocused and given a little bit of a hand up, as you might say, they can go ahead and improve. And then this is an interesting area that's provisionally occupied. These are the hidden homeless. And a lot of the people that are in the school situation where the children are homeless find themselves in this situation where because the children are involved, people are open to allow them to stay in their home for a period of time in the hopes of being able to correct that situation and protect the children. We have other situations there where veterans, veterans who depend on other people in the community who appreciate them or appreciate what they've done are willing to bend over backwards to try to protect them for a while. But that can't go on forever, obviously, and they need some help. The other aspect of it that I think is very interesting is, has to do with the demographics. In other words, who are these people? First of all, we have 379 students in Lee County. We've mentioned tonight there are 9,300 children in the, in the school system approximately, and 379 of them are actually homeless right now. We have veterans who, because of different disabilities, find themselves on the streets and don't have the capacity really to, to get out of that lifestyle. They're, they're difficult cases sometimes. The most recent point in time count, which we do every January, we found 89 sheltered and 78 unsheltered people. Now, obviously, because of COVID, et cetera, it was difficult to do this pit, and I'm not sure that it's as accurate as we would like it to be. The other one, Carrie from Brick Capital mentioned, this housing gap concept. One thing that's really helpful to understand is that when you're talking about affordable housing, the target is asking people not to pay more than 30% of their household income in order to provide housing. So if you take our population of people that are struggling, and you look out and see, okay, how many houses do we need to be able to find so that these people can afford it? We're about 1,044 affordable units short of what we need. Again, the appreciation in housing in the area that Carrie mentioned obviously contributes to that. But the issue is how much money do they have to put down, and where can they find the housing? This is where people like Carrie Bradshaw and others really help try to find people, locations where they can rent, work with landlords, et cetera. Providers and types of local resources. These are the ones that are associated with, with our S3. Outreach Mission, who provides shelters. Salvation Army is working on a day center, Bread of Life, extreme weather shelter, Family Promise Temporary Housing, Haven, which I think you're familiar with, Low Country Social Services Department, our social services department. H3, Dr. Hall and his wife, amazing people who help a number of people out there in the community. United Way, Brick Capital, S3 Housing Connect, who we're talking about tonight, Johnson Lee Harnett Community Action, who I believe Commissioner Lovick is associated with, and Daymark Recovery Center and Sand Hill Center of Mental Health, which we recently had a, a discussion with. Going back to the first one, you see Outreach Mission, Salvation Army, and Bread of Life, because of S3's efforts, are collaborating on right now a transition program that tries to provide the necessary staffing and assistance in the downtown area, kind of duplicating a new, a day center kind of concept. But again, I'm not sure that this would have happened. At least that's what Hammer Carter, who is the executive director of Outreach Mission, he's, he said, I don't see how it could have happened without the kind of collaboration that we had with S3. The other thing I would recognize is that a number of the county and state services that you see up there, Lee County Social Services, the United Way, Johnson Lee Harnett, they all send representatives to these meetings on a monthly basis. And why? That's because their message that they're trying to get out to people can get out through the people that are actually on the streets helping. And again, it's the whole idea of networking. Role of S3, leveraging and coordination of private-public resources is the key one. Leveraging and coordination. Nonprofit board training, collecting and analyzing data, identifying and prioritizing community projects, building a network, creating a system of care, educating about misperceptions about homelessness, improving capacity of organizations, training volunteers. The other day, when I was talking to one of the commissioners, they said, well, what does, what does S3 do? Here's two slides, eight items, or nine, that specifically identify the things that they're doing on a regular basis that make a difference. A pragmatic reality check. What does that mean exactly? Well, let's think about two things. A greater severity of an individual family situation, the greater it is, the greater the community cost when housed, unhoused. In other words, if we have people that are struggling, and on top of that, we add homelessness or lack of being able to find affordable housing, the community suffers more in terms of having to help them solve their problem or just take care of them. The other thing is that multiple resources that are not coordinated result in inefficient duplication of services and segments of our population not being served. This is a huge one. You have a lot of people in the community that have a heart to help. They're talented and called to do it. But one of the aspects that I think government does really well is gathering those people together and focusing them so that they can decide who ought to take what piece of the elephant and get on with the work of doing it and maybe helping in situations when they need some additional assistance. Why? Because of number one, our costs go up if we're not doing well leveraging what the, the nonprofits are able to do. It's just a cooperation issue. Okay, final thoughts. Over the last six months, I watched some 27 individuals meet monthly to solve or to help resolve long-term and immediate needs in this population. They are interested in improving the circumstances of these people, not just creating an environment where we accept it and let it stay where it is. They take some from rental to homeownership. They refer severe cases to mental health assistance. They help protect families with children who don't have housing. They're not just subsidizing a destructive lifestyle, but providing a way to a healthier, more productive lifestyle. Second item there says, I recommend, we commend the people who put this together. I think Tamara talked about 2017, four years ago, that people started doing this. It has made a huge difference in the city, in the city and in the unincorporated areas, the places where we live. And the last item that I would mention is the possibility of future support from the county government. We're not, there, there are many counties in our state who find the ability to be able to support these kinds of efforts from the county budget. Support is not the same as paying for everything. Why do we possibly want to change or soften our paradigm? I think leveraging existing sources, increasing capacity is a huge argument. The other thing is just the basic idea of moving some of the struggling population to wholeness. We're not sustaining irresponsible behavior. What this organization and the people that contribute to it are trying to do is improve the lot of the people that are in it. Ultimately, obviously, making a contributing citizen out of somebody that's been struggling is an advantage to us. And I'd like to find a role for county government to encourage and supplement this effort. Thank you for being patient and listening to what I had to say. As I finish up, I really want to mention one other thing. I think the character of our nation reflects the way we, is reflected in the way we help the person who is struggling. It's always been a standard. I think it comes from our Christian roots. I'm not sure if we take Jesus as an example. He felt that the poor will always be with us, and to some degree, we are measured by how we treat the poor. If we can, in fact, take some of our resources and give hope to these people and, and supplement the effort of people who are working really hard to improve it, I think that's a noble goal, in addition to these very pragmatic issues that I've mentioned. Again, I thank you for listening, and I appreciate my commissioner, my fellow commissioners who worked hard with me to try to understand the full breadth of this problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for the commissioner? Commissioner Lovick?
Just a comment. Earlier this year, I went out west on the Los Angeles area, and I've got pictures on my phone of homelessness. I sure hope our county and the surrounding counties never get to that. I'm not one that likes to throw money in a pot that's empty. You know, I like to see people help themselves. But me being in law enforcement, I know that a lot of times if you don't help people, you know, and I know they got to help theirself, but if you don't help people, that they, they end up in the system some way or another. So if this is a way that we could help our people and help them get on the right path to want to help themselves, I could see something that we're, we need to stay on top of this because we don't want the problem that, that other towns and cities and bigger towns is, you think litter is bad, and things like that start with homelessness. I don't think a lot of people want to be in this situation. So I appreciate your presentation and you looking into what you're doing and giving that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
No comment.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Carver, for the presentation. I think it was a great presentation of the problem that we have in Lee County and... I think it was a great presentation, the problem that we have in Lee County. I just think we need to do the right thing, and I think it would be to help S3. And I don't know what all the problems are, but you know, if you're in a pissing contest with the city, or the mayor, whoever it is, get over it and let's do the right thing and try to help these folks.
Commissioner Lovick?
Thank you for your presentation.
Anything else? Commissioner Connect?
No, good presentation. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is manager's report, March 2021 financial report.
Good evening. You have before you the financial report for March 2021. As typically, I'm going to remind you, the sales tax runs three months behind. Tax collections as a percentage of our budget through March 2021 are 0.55% ahead of the same time period last year. In reviewing expenditures, we're at 75% is our target. As you will continue to see, we still have some departments that are ahead of that when we include encumbrances. But if we take those encumbrances out, we're slowly getting our numbers down. IT is the only department that's over, and that's due to the annual maintenance contracts and the costs associated with their move to Douglas Drive, and that will continue to balance itself out as we get closer to the end of the year. You also have our sales tax reports through collections through January 2021. As you will see, our numbers did go down a little bit for January, which is typical. However, our growth overall is still above 17%. So we are continuing to do well this year. We'll have the February numbers for you at the next meeting, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Any questions on those reports? If not, I'm going to, all of you have your nice big budget book. Very few of you were on the board last time when we went and did a line item review. So if you'll be with me, I was just going to kind of give you a heads up of how your book is organized and what's in there. You'll start out, you have the calendar from Jennifer that shows you the workshop sessions for May and June, and we'll get you a more detailed calendar now that we know who you want to see and all, once we can get that set. First tab is revenues, and you'll have a summary page for every department that has revenues. Behind some of those summary pages, you will see a detail page that has more text. Some of our departments provide, that's a very good, some very good information as to what their different revenue line items represent, and if they're restricted and stuff, especially social services and with their multitude of line items to help us understand that. Then you go to expenses, and you'll have a tab for each department. And behind each tab for each department, you'll find a summary page for that department, and then you'll find, again, a detailed list that is only showing one year, and that's the recommended for that year. Again, if a department chose to do some text and give us explanation for increases or changes, you'll find that there. They are also required to detail any temporary salaries that they have and any capital. So you will see there what the manager has recommended. If you look into the other bound book, you can sometimes see the requested and tell if there was a differential. Okay? Behind those sections, you will see what we call our CB forms. Every county department will have provided you a CB1, which is organizational chart for their department. You'll also have a CB2, which is a narrative where the department is explaining what they do. You may see documentation of how they are tying themselves to the strategic plan that you adopted, and other information on their departments. If they've requested new positions, you'll have a CB3 that explains the position and why they think it's needed. And then CB4s are done for classifications. So not every department will have every form, but some may have the CB3 or CB4, but all should have a CB1 or CB2 if they are a regular county department. Behind some of the departments that are agencies that we fund, you will see letters or spreadsheets explaining their requests to you. You have two different nonprofit sections, one in human services and one in cultural and recreation. That's where you'll see all those pretty little colored tabs. We had multiple requests, so we tabbed them so that you could go through and separate, they'd be separated for you easily. At the very back, there's a tab that's called Other. Those are our other funds that we have, such as remuneration tax, capital reserve, drug, sorry, drug seizure funds, and others like that. And then the final tab is the solid waste tab, where you'll find more information on the solid waste budget that Dr. Crumton discussed with you. So happy reading. Any questions on that?
Any questions of Lisa? Do we get a truck to carry this home?
I would.
Just kidding.
I put Santi, I'll go to work to get them here and stuff, so that I wouldn't have to carry them in one by one and stuff. But thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. I want to let the board know that we have received a letter from Johnson Lee Harnett Community Action of their interest on taking over the Elections Building downtown when we vacate. You know, there's discussion of them expanding services out of that location, and if they can move to downstairs, that would obviously help them quite a bit and give them a lot of space. So we're in discussions with them, just wanted to let you know that at this point. And obviously, they're looking for a donation, which, if you understand what they're doing and the building itself, a donation's probably in order if they'll take it from us. So just thought I would let you all know that. We still have some information we need to exchange back and forth, but I think there'll be a formal request for that coming pretty soon, and we expect Elections to be in their new building in June.
Late June as well.
Late June. And wanted to remind the board that this week started the move of the Registered Deeds into her new location, and that the Registered Deeds office will be closed Friday as they are making the switch with their computer systems from one location to the next. So it's about a two or three-week process to get them moved, and they'll be finished, hopefully, by the 21st of the month. So lots going on. Possibility the DA could move in June to their new digs, and that we could start in July on the, call it the new courthouse. It's not new courthouse, the main courthouse building in July. So we're starting to see some things get finished. And then on the Parks and Recreation side, I know that's, we've been moving a lot of dirt, moving, doing a lot of grading and that kind of stuff, so there's really not a whole lot to see. But at a meeting I was at today, you'll start seeing a lot more in June. So you'll be able to see some park equipment going up and some tennis courts being put back in place and pickleball courts being built. So, so pretty excited. And I know Santi Agua's excited because he can see the finish line on these projects now. So that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the manager?
Was there any public service announcement, newspaper, radio about the closures?
At the Registered Deeds?
Yes.
Yes, sir. It's been out there. So I know we sent a press release to the Herald, and I know it's out on social media.
All right.
And I'll make sure that it's gone to the radio, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Where are we with the census? I saw an email about some information, but not all of it yet.
Yes, the total numbers were released for the state, and some of the preliminary numbers were released for the counties. So if you were able to, and I don't know if that link would work with me forwarding, what I forwarded it to you all, but it will show you what your population increase was from the last census. So we were in a moderate growth area. I think it was like 3,000 people increase from the last census. So we don't know any of the demographic makeup and that kind of thing, so we're still expecting that sometime in September to get the rest of the data.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we did, I did, we got an email today from Jenny. She forwarded something to me about discussions of, you know, how things would change with elections and that kind of thing, and when we could start talking about redistricting. And I'll forward that to you all tomorrow.
Good question. Any other questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is Commissioner Comments. We'll start with Commissioner Carver.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that must have gone into making this thing. In my history and working in education, et cetera, I've had to make reports like this and things. And it's just incredible. I just so much appreciate the work that Dr. Crumton and his people do on a regular basis. So thanks.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Yes, just a quick update from the Child Fatality Task Force. We had two items as legislative goals, and they both passed through the Judiciary Committee, so they're going to go before the House. The first one is a Firearms Safe Storage Education and Awareness Bill, and that will go before the House Rules Committee. And then the Infant Safe Surrender Bill was heard last week, and that will go before the House Health Committee next. So moving along. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, I toured the Board of Elections, the new Board of Elections, half of the building that I'm in, and it's coming along good, looks good. I toured the old courthouse, it's looking good, like the DA's office could be moving in soon, like you said. And the Registered Deeds, all of them look good. And as far as Parks and Rec, I'd just like to report that we had 300 to 400 T-ball kids out in the new parks over at OT Sloan, and a lot of kids running around making sounds of summer up there. So just want to report that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
I love T-ball. I really do. No, I'm good, thank you.
Is your grandson playing T-ball?
That's what he calls it.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Looks good to have chairs full, and hopefully, one day, we'll be able to get together and have more people. We need to do this for our community. Thank you for everything that our staff and everyone does. I got a chance to go by, speaking of those T-ball fields, that is a neat little complex, and four fields back-to-back, and I met with Joe out there, Joseph, and got to see that. And I didn't know if you noticed, Commissioner Sharp, but they're going to have adult Wolfabob.
I've been told that.
So that may be something we break out our...
A commissioner team?
Commissioner team, there you go. But things are looking good. Like I say, dirt's moving, and it's exciting time for our county, and I'm just excited for this. Thank you so much, sir.
I hate to add this, but what is not in your budget is the Fire Advisory Board's recommendation for the fire departments. I can say this, I don't believe, maybe one station, all of them, I believe, are remaining the same, if I recall correctly. So we will have our budget for the Fire Advisory Board coming before us on May 17th. Got to go out to look at Barat Forge. The dirt pile's still there, and the road is coming along, and soon, they will be paved, and we'll be going in the front way instead of the back way. And this morning, the manager and I and Commissioner Lovick were at the airport groundbreaking and the toilet flush. They had the hookup to the sewer line, which is imperative for them to go on to expand. So they did have a toilet there, and I told them I was not going to be part of that picture because I clean toilets at work. So we'll leave it at that. Before we go into closed session, I'm going to ask that the staff remain. All county employee staff, please remain as we go into closed session.
With that, I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-31811A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property, and per NC General Statute 143-31811A9 to discuss plans to protect public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is that? Nancy, the statutes are on the agenda.
I didn't hear the question.
I didn't hear the question.
Do they have mutual aid? Do they have mutual aid? I mean...
Active shooter, the either jurisdictions or shot.
Matter of fact, highway control.
Hey, just a quick reminder, next meeting's on a Wednesday, right?
That's correct. The civic center was tied up on Monday.
Civic Center is Wednesday?
What date is that?
That's the 19th. The civic center has graduations scheduled for our regular board meeting schedule on the May 17th, so we moved it to Wednesday, May 19th. And that will coincide with the joint public hearings with the planning board at that same location. We've got a few of them scheduled, so that's why we needed the larger venue.
You ready?
Do I have a motion to go, or excuse me, a motion to adjourn? Motion been made to adjourn any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.